First item on our special agenda, which is rate increases, solid waste.
And if you're number two.
Number two.
No, and I'm really number two.
You're always number one, Roxanne.
I didn't know you were talking to sewers.
Exactly. Wow, that was impressive.
Thank you.
Uh correction with a punch. Okay, so with that, let's start with um the ca- application for the council vacancy.
So Mayor, if I can in your packet, there's an administrative, an itinerary report that had the compilation of three questions from each council member. And so we're asking for a direction on what questions to use. Our goal is to release on Wednesday to the application to allow it to go through October twenty third. I put in front of you the updated applications with these dates, uh the process, uh a sample of the what we're gonna put in the newspaper. We thought we'd publish in the Daily Journal, a one a panel or quarter panel ad, uh once a week for five weeks while the application period is open. And of course, we're gonna have a website page and it's gonna be prominent on the front page of the website. But the most important thing is to winnow down the questions and make sure these are the supplemental questions you want to use. And of course, they're not gonna be broken down by which council member submitted.
Questions?
What are the questions?
Yeah.
They're they're attached to the staff report?
Okay, have you been up? Ah, cool, that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you so much, okay. So we're gonna talk about the questions, council?
No, no, because it's uh, oh yes, very good show, thank you.
And does anyone else want one?
Or do you wanna talk about any part of the application first? Which would you prefer, application or questions?
Well. I don't even see the application. Where is the application? Oh, this is it here?
Yeah, this is gonna be there.
Yeah, well, this looks pretty much like a state. I don't see tough questions on the application here. It's pretty standard application.
Yes, it is. We're gonna remove the questions that were read last time and replace them with what you wanted.
Right.
I think, is it uh Maureen, your last meeting is going to be what day?
My last meeting is gonna be October twenty first.
October twenty first, okay. So it will be that we will decide this at the next meeting we have after
I thought I had read it was the first meeting in October. No? What's that, what?
I I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
He said her last meeting would be October twenty first. I thought I had read it would be the first meeting in.
It was originally gonna be in November, but due to a number of things, I've moved it to October instead of November fourth.
So our November four meeting, we will have a vacancy for, and we will meet on November twelve. And then whomever we select, they will be um we will be voting on November twelve?
I'm sorry?
Voting on November twelve as well, interviewing and and voting, or hearing the presentation.
Yes. Yes.
And then they're sworn in on November eighteenth, which is a regular meeting, or November, what's the day?
November eighteenth is correct.
A regular meeting, okay. I got you. So we will be four people November four. Everybody got that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, sorry, I just wanted to check the timing one more time.
Okay, so uh for discussion, I'd like to go back to the process here.
All right, sure.
On this page, where under number three in the process, it talks about a two-minute opening station and then a a statement and then responding to a council member questions for uh up to eight minutes. And and the only concern I have is uh that we have a a completely fair and transparent process. And that the questions that are asked of each candidate should be uniform. I think that in order to have apples-to-apples comparison, okay, we should have uniform questions that are asked and then respond to those questions.
But each candidate's different. And each candidate is gonna provide provide different responses.
Yeah, so you're free to meet with them.
Um yeah, but that's not public. Okay, I disagree with that. I think if we, if it's all public and in the open, we should be able to ask any questions we want. This is
I think there's um, there's a a chance for people to have a question and allow them to respond in a way that far exceeds, unless the others get to respond to the same question. Questions that some other people may get, okay? And it'll create a perception that may not be completely accurate.
Could your question just be clarification on the answers? If you had a question about one of their answers?
Well, I think that's a little bit different. It's not a totally different question.
Because those are all the same.
I still think it's best to just stick with the same questions for everybody, okay? And the difference is how they respond to them.
You're only talking about the Eric, you're only talking about the November twelfth meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had actually, maybe I remember differently. I thought it was a two months or two-minute opening statement to talk about your background and then eight minutes on substantive matters, as you so chose. I don't recall us
That's how we did it when you and I went for appointment, right?
Yeah. But when we met the other day to decide this, I did not recall that we had talked about asking questions. Do I, is my recollection not the same?
We, I I thought what we talked about was just following up, like we had clarifying questions, you know, if somebody maybe didn't answer the question or maybe was say
During that eight minutes?
Well, no, during the written, the written part.
No, so we were gonna use the remainder of the eight minutes for that purpose, what is?
Yes, yes. Right. So if under council member's plan, if there was like kind of something vague that you wanted clarification, then you had to ask that same question to everybody else, even if it wasn't vague on their application. Or if we just might want a little bit more information. And I think it would be up to us and up to the public to judge us to make sure that we're being fair and not slant tilting the scale by just asking fair questions.
Well, so as I recall, um the last time we did an appointment, uh it was uh respond to questions on the questionnaire. And those were all made public, those responses were there for everybody to see. And then the ten minutes was for um individuals to describe who they are to the public, right?
Presentation, yes.
Your presentation, right? Why do you wanna be on the council? What would you like to do if you're on your, you're on the council? What ideas do you, you know, how do you differ from other candidates possibly? Um those were the things where people uh uh made their case. And I think that is a test of each individual to show who they are. I I don't think um there's there's quite often that that questions get answered, they're not completely maybe to the point exactly for everybody. But it's that that particular candidate's best stab at it. And I think that's part of what you have to look at. If people aren't capable of giving complete thoughts, we wanna know that.
Did you, did you wanna chime in?
Yeah, I just, I just a little bit. I think the purpose of of asking the questions is to help each council member make their decision about who they support. And so I think that there will be situations where you might not have any questions for one person and you might have quite a few questions for several others, because that's what you need answered in order to to make up your mind about who who you support, who you support. And the four of us have to make up our minds, make that decision. The answering of the questions, they're all answering the same questions, that's how we would look down. It's really about those those lingering thoughts, maybe the the parts of the application that you do wanna follow up on that you didn't, you weren't entirely comfortable with that answer, you wanna give them an opportunity to explain it. And those, I'm I'm trying to think about it, I don't think those those questions would be the same for everybody. I think that this process, the way we laid it out, is fair to everyone, and we do ask them all the same questions getting into that interview. And that interview, I'm calling it an interview, that interview is to help us, to help each of us make up our mind. And and to your point, Rick, should that happen in public or should that happen in private one-on-one? I think I think it's better to see it happen in in public, uh both because if those questions are unfair, then the public gets to see how you're being unfair.
Well, if I, just a minute, one quick second. Also, if you give the same questions to everybody, the first candidate is caught off guard, because they're gonna be the first to hear it, let's just say, and you have five people thereafter, well, they all got to sit there and posture as to what they're gonna say. It almost gives an undue advantage. I'm just, I'm not gonna sort of destroy it, but it also gives an undue advantage to the first sucker up, who's probably gonna hear it for the first time.
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying there.
And then everybody else, I mean, I know I would be, if I was number three, I sure as heck would be sitting there figuring out what I was gonna say.
We're gonna figure it out by then.
Sound a whole lot better than number one. You know, I mean, I just, I I don't know. So that, there's a certain unfairness. When we ask the same question, is usually on the condition interviews, which are separate. So there isn't, the person isn't sitting here listening to how the next, the first person answered and what the question was.
Can I make a suggestion, Rick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the, on November twelfth, in our special meeting where we've got ten minutes for everybody, can we flip it?
Mm-hmm.
Let's ask our questions and then give them uh the ability to give a summation, so two minutes at the end rather than two minutes at the beginning. I think that they they would probably feel better about that, because they could build into their answer maybe the questions that they were being asked.
Or something, they might have forgotten, whatever.
Some some more.
You should give them more than two minutes.
I would give them more than two minutes. I think five minutes is enough.
Sure, I think I would see that, but that two minutes goes by so fast.
No.
Three, three or four, right?
That's five minutes.
I'm not passing this, I don't want to give more than two.
Yeah, this is an important thing. I think five minutes at least should be allowed each one, okay?
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Okay, and another question now.
That's a nice compromise here that I'm making.
Yeah, okay, and another question now. Since, like you described, listening to each other's responses, maybe we keep them in another room, they come in one at a time and answer questions.
And they can stream it on their phone.
Oh.
It is public, you know.
Well, maybe, just like in high school, turn off the phone.
High school, 'cause you're, we can do, yeah, I kinda like this. This is actually getting a little fairer. Let's ask the follow-up questions and then, like you said, um
Okay, so questions are related to their responses to the questionnaire.
Yes.
Or their, or their application, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it's not gonna be, yeah, it won't be anything terribly new, but like, what did you mean, you you don't like heights and density restrictions and whatever.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so well, it's on the subject of their response to a particular question.
Yes.
And if we allow them five minutes to talk, then I'd be totally happy.
Or their application.
Yeah, whatever's on that, that's true, whatever you put on your application.
You know, we're doing this, we're asking questions. If you hear somebody asks a question of one person and you think
Can I?
I like this, I like that question, I don't wanna ask it of the other person who I who I like, you can ask that question. So, I mean, we have the ability to 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 ask whatever questions to whatever person we want.
As long as we have established the questions and then we're only asking for additional information responding to those questions, then I think that's reasonable.
The only um issue that I can see us running into is if we all have questions at one at a time, this gets kind of eaten up and then we end up giving 'cause I think Joe's right, we could say, you know what, I don't have any questions. You you outlined everything here. I don't have any questions. Do you have questions? No, no, no. And then is that a, is that a disadvantage or is that an advantage?
Or or the converse, you all have questions and you can't get them in in that tight period of time.
Right, right, and it's
Could be more troubling. Um if if there's no questions, then we will see whether they can do a song and a dance or whether they can act. I wanna test their best abilities. But I can make
But at the end of the day, we are, each of us has our own perspective of what we're looking for, on what we're trying to get. And and that that was part of the the spirit of of everybody asking questions and proposing kind of some things that that would reveal uh facts about the candidates. And I think to to limit that is just, it might work for some of us, but it doesn't, it won't, may not work for all of us.
So rather than ten minutes for everyone, how about, how about questions with one-minute answers, followed by everybody gets five minutes?
Follow-up questions with one-minute answers.
Yeah.
Right.
All the questions, one-minute answers.
You're on a roll, that's it, I like it.
And then everybody gets five minutes to to kind of round it out. I'm I'm good with that.
And if you wanna have a requisite number of questions, uh follow-up questions? No. It could be that each of us might have a question for, sorry to go over you, but you won't be there. Each of us might have a question for each person or might have none, but you'll you'll get it in. With four of us, you'll get it in with the four minutes.
Right, yeah. Right.
Yeah, all right.
Provided we get a one question.
So that would be nine minutes or so.
Okay, so there's no set time, there's five minutes of a closing statement after the questioning has occurred.
Yes. Sure.
And can you just say one more time how the questioning is gonna work? Is there a time limit, like no more than ten minutes with one-minute answers, no matter how many questions, or what, or what?
Number of questions.
Three, three questions per council member per person?
No more than?
Okay, that's a lot.
As long as your question doesn't take a long time to ask. And we're timing the answer no more than one minute.
I was saying, no more than two.
Two questions per two council members per county.
There's two, eight, that would be a total of eight minutes, right?
That makes sense.
More than two questions, one-minute answers.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Some people take longer asking the questions.
It will be, it will be a test of one's conciseness, which we can, brevity, which you can always use as a city council member, brevity.
Yeah.
And I need to make sure all the councilmen that um the applications will then be due on um October twenty third. And on the twenty fourth, we will make them available, redacted with home address and personal information removed, along with the question responses on our website. We're having a council vacancy page website, so people can um see the applications.
And then we will meet on the twenty eighth
The twenty eighth.
to winnow down if there's too many candidates, correct?
Is that right?
Sure, we get some back.
Well, the money's so big.
Judging by the activity in my counter, you are going to have some.
Okay, great. Good, all right.
So, other questions?
Everybody good on that process? I think that, thank you, uh Rick, for bringing those up and and getting us to sort of hash through.
Thank you.
So it's not gonna be a mystery when the time comes. Good.
So, I think the the purpose of tonight was to introduce the twelve questions.
We're headed there right now.
Thank you.
Oh, no, we're just getting to the meat and potatoes now. All right, so um we have uh three questions from each of us. What do you guys wanna do? Some of them might overlap, some of them could be amalgamated, as best as I can tell.
Yeah, let's look for overlaps.
Yes, go ahead.
Let's look for overlaps and try to eliminate or bring on something.
Okay. Well, I think mine and Joe's were very similar with is um how would you handle a matter that is very, that has very disparate points of view? That's my number two.
Yep.
And your number one is how would you deal with disagreeing with the majority of the audience members?
Well, I I think yours subsumes my one answer.
Okay, great.
I tried to be very gentle. Okay, good. So that's good. So now what?
Yeah. Well, let's just look at the next one and see if anything else is in conflict or
Let's go to Joe's number three. What issue do you understand better than most council members and you're understated of the council's ability to deal with it?
I like that.
I like that too, actually. Smart pants. That's what it's asking. Well, let's keep that one in our pocket, so now we have two questions. Um Rick, you, I'm gonna go to your number one first, if that's okay?
Sure.
How would you seek to serve the underrepresented in our community? I think that's a worthwhile, yeah. So we're on board with that one, that's question number three.
That's great.
That's great. Yeah.
So we're on board with that one, that's question number three. All right, number two on Rick. Climate change is a huge and starkly threatening reality in our community. Is that a question? All right. Do you believe that the city is taking
For some people, it might be.
No doubt. Do you believe that the city is taking appropriate sufficient actions to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions? So that's a sustainability question.
Yeah, is it the only one? Let's, are there any?
Um
Are there any?
I did not have that one. Eric did not have a sustainability either, I don't believe.
No, I don't see it.
Okay, so we can put that there. We may wanna winnow this down, so put that in the in the column.
Yeah.
In order to maintain, I'm number three of Rick. In order to maintain its current level of services provided to the public, the city is to increase its revenue stream. What would be your ideas that would help maintain its current level of services?
Looking for new ideas.
Uh is that also Eric's number one?
I thought so. It says Eric's number one is a city of symbolism and a pension that is quickly approaching one-quarter of a billion. What are your thoughts and ideas as to this way to counter this issue?
It's a different subject. I'm talking about maintaining services, this is talking about getting unfunded by the dog.
But one, one um, I don't know, I wanna call it issue, but just one concern I had with um Rick's question number three is that it's it's assuming that the only way to maintain current service levels is to raise revenues as opposed to maybe kind of spending out some places or doing other things. So this is the one, if I
Uh I I think if you if you read Eric's first sentence, uh which defines the problem, then then there are the two different ways of uh resolving it. I think the questions can be made one question, uh but I think you should put Eric's sentence at the beginning.
Yeah, and I I think
Eric's sentence, why we're in this boat?
Well, I mean, I I was trying to get at what I think Rick was getting at, but I just didn't wanna make, I didn't wanna assume that the answer is
Raise revenues.
Raise revenues, right. I think, I personally think it is, but
We can amalgamate those two very, very easily. We start with why we're in this boat, which is the unfunded pension. Um it could impact services, that's part of Rick's. Um what are your ideas to solve it?
Part of it is insufficient revenue to meet the things we've already been providing, too.
So what, and so what we're really getting at from the candidate is, what are your ideas to help us um deal with our fiscal challenges?
I I mean, you can create a reward cost, I mean, it
Yeah, but we have fiscal challenges.
Encourage that thinking both ways.
Right, we have fiscal challenges, what are your ideas to address them?
Sure.
I would probably even do it that way, but I'm happy to put unfunded pension in there, 'cause that's where our biggest fiscal challenge is.
So with regard to Eric's first sentence here on his number one, I think that there's no real context for it. We, it needs to be stated that, well, this is unsustainable because
But they might not think it's sustainable. I mean, I think it's it's best to put a unloaded, just a fact there and let people, the answer could be
You think it would save persons without cutting costs or raising revenues? As it stands, this is unsustainable, right?
That that they may have, I mean, why are we, why are we putting thoughts into it? I think it's better just to set the table and say, you know, what do you think of this? Some people might not think it's a problem, some people don't think it's a problem. They wanna keep spending, um and and push it up that much.
No, we can print money.
But I mean, I I just wanna make sure that we're trying to keep these as open-ended as possible, especially if we get
I think that's probably a better way to go, is to keep it open-ended. And and how would you address our fiscal challenges? You know, something along those lines. And you could put, so that we maintain services, I'm okay with that, because that's what we need to do. How's that sound?
Yeah, given our desire to maintain services.
That's right, absolutely.
Right.
I'm good with that.
To serve the public, okay.
So how are we worth it?
Well, given, just add to the second sentence, given our desire to maintain uh
Um
our current level of si- of si- of services, what are your thoughts and ideas on the best ways we could deal with this?
With our fiscal challenges.
With the fiscal challenges. I had that, but I just didn't, I I didn't wanna assume that people thought it was a fiscal challenge. Like, even though it is, but anyway.
I hope that you don't think that's sticking our hand too much. I was pretty obvious. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's okay.
Rather than decision? Okay, all right. I I know what you're saying, but it is certainly dollars, but it's a restaurant. Okay, so we're we're, we've amalgamated Eric's one with Rick's number three. And so that leaves me with my number one, what do you consider the two most pressing issues, speaking of being open-ended?
Thank you. And
Thank you.
Eric, more than that?
So, um but I'm not married to that, because we've, or you could not ask about fiscal challenges at all and say, what are your two most pressing issues for the city? You can leave it, I'm not married to that, um if you guys want to
That's just an open question.
I like number one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like the number one there.
Open questions are good.
And I, then number three, I just asked about parks, because I felt why not? I got married to it. I was like, you know what, so, not sexy sewers.
Not sexy sewers.
How about because everybody at me tells me to leave him alone?
Well, the thing is, is oftentimes your only interaction with the city, other than perhaps when you're worried about how you're gonna flush the toilet, is a park. And so I thought, oh, parks should be, but I, listen, I'm not married to that, we're getting a lot of questions in here, so I can forego that. Let's go to, um if no one's fighting me on parks, let's go to number two of Eric, which is, to what extent have you participated in the general plan update process thus far? And what are your thoughts as to how the process is going to date?
Well, that's easy if you haven't done anything, you can just say, I don't know, 'cause I haven't been there.
Well, this this question, you know, I I wanted to get some questions that were gonna kind of separate the pack, because we've had a million meetings on this. And if there's a candidate who hasn't showed up to one of these meetings and at least said, I mean, that just, I think that says a lot of, that that was why
Mm-hmm.
I totally wanna keep it in, I'm good.
I like it, yeah.
And then what about Eric's number three? If you could change one thing about the city?
I think
It's shaken up to do account with most pressing issues?
So, so, I think, I have one question. I think it
Duplicate it of my number one?
A little bit, um yes, of number one. If people have something that's really bothering them, they're gonna fit it into number one. Or maybe, I don't know, one one of the other questions is probably uh duplicative of their answer.
What what I was trying to go for this is that it's easy to just, you know, say, oh, I'm gonna work on this, I'm gonna work on that, but you know, there's a lot of things that we can improve as a city. I was looking for ideas. Um not not necessarily talking about housing is one of the most pressing issues or the unfunded pension liability is, but you know, what what is it, is it how we
Oh, it's the magic wand question. I like it. It causes people to think.
Well, then can can we Can I amalgamate it with mine then? Can we just, can we make that a two-parter? What are the most pressing issues and
Sure.
Or, well?
I I'm looking for, yeah, I I want some creative thinking here. Um you know, it's easy to say like, are you a team player? Yes, I'm a, I'm a team player.
All right. All right, let's take it in.
Yeah.
I think it's a separate one. I'm I'm convinced it's sort of a separate thing. How many questions do we have?
Two, very good question.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
So I can say eleven.
Don't copy right, eight?
Eight, down to twelve.
Eight down from twelve? Makes it kind of essentially each had two.
Yeah.
And they're all good.
That's good.
That works really well.
Rick? You can deal with eight questions, how we have them. Okay, good. I just wanna make sure you were reading and not giving me the thumbs up. Good, um
Yes, yes, yes. No.
And so just to clarify, you know, so we're not gonna have a limit on these responses, but we're gonna request brevity, is that what we
We're about to say we'll be
Request brevity in the written version, please?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I can add that to the prescriptions.
Well, no, I'm, I didn't
That's what we had decided previously.
Yeah, I just wanted to
Nobody wanted to do, you know, three hundred words or less or anything of this sort.
So just request brevity. Okay, let's add that to the application pack.
Well, we'll get bullet points, I think. We wanna make sure we don't get bullet points, so.
Yeah, they're affecting.
Yeah, yeah, they're good ideas, bullet points, right.
Okay, um is it okay, I will draft these up and then
Well, you can put this quote in, as Mark Twain said, if you had more time, it would be shorter. I love that quote, so you could suggest that, I don't know.
I think you should say that. Um I'll type these up and and if you're okay, because we have a really short turnaround with publishing on Wednesday, can I review with the mayor and just make sure we capture everything in the order you want them?
Yes.
Yes.
And then we'll be good to go for Wednesday? Does that work?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll do the edits, okay. Good, everyone still good about that one?
Oh, we have some questions, I'll try.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Drew, public comment.
Uh so listening to you, I just uh Rick's number two, when you were going through it, I I think you may want a different, maybe a little twist different when I read it. It seems like it just could be, is the city doing everything? Yes. And you move on to the next question. Like, it's almost like a yes-no question. It can't, some candidate might go longer, but it
Oh, well
it kind of becomes a yes-no, so maybe want tweaked a little bit, depending on what you want. 'Cause my first read was it, is the city doing everything? Yes. Okay, now let me move on to the next question.
Right, so we should ask for what they think that we should do.
Explain.
Yeah, explain, right.
So, so, so that
Just add explain, that's right.
Okay, I'm okay with adding explain. Feel like I'm at school explaining your answer. Okay, thanks for that suggestion. Any more public comment?
I'll send the speakers.
Terrific, okay, good. So let's move on to sewerways.
There are Thanks, let's move on this.
Did I screw?
This has applications in my close of business Wednesday the twenty-third, and then number two, it says that there are And then number two, it says if there are an extraordinary number of applications, we'll have a special meeting on November twenty-eighth. That's a pretty short ti- turnaround in terms of deciding to have a special meeting. I'm I'm wondering if we don't indicate that we're going to have a special meeting on the twenty-eighth and then if if there are four or five applications, we can cancel it.
Absolutely.
That's not.
Could could you give some guidance on what that number is? Because then we wouldn't have to ask. Could you tell us if it's more than X, then we're going to have a special meeting?
Well, I think let's just notice it and then if there's a council's cancellation, um, and.
Wait, you're talking about the number of candidates, huh?
The number?
Remember, what is there a high number of applications?
Is there a maximum, is there a maximum that we want to bring to this section?
An extraordinary number of.
Yeah, so it's our more than, some number.
Yeah, we've gotten some of that number, so. If you if you give that version tonight, you might figure out.
Six?
I think six is plenty to work with.
Five or six, five or six.
Five, five or six.
So if it's six or fewer, they will, who has a special meeting?
That's the way to the interim process. I think so, okay. Six would be the outermost for me.
Okay, six or fewer will have a meeting, and the meeting is scheduled and it's on all council members' calendars.
Six or more, you mean?
Six or more.
Six or more.
Thank you.
If you're.
Everybody have peace with this?
Six is a lot. Six is a lot.
Six is a lot. Everybody have peace? It'll be very difficult to replace every mayor first if the litter, trying all that.
But you know, even if we're looking at six, even if we're looking at six, we might choose not to interview each and every one. That's the point of the meeting, right?
But we might not have.
So maybe we should increase that number a little bit, so we have room to make some bets.
Uh. If, I'm confused, so in in my mind, Rick, if there are more than five or more than six applications, what, how do we end up?
Let's take a poll on that, because I I think it should be viable.
Okay, then we're going to interview them all, is that is that what we're saying?
We have five, I have to, I'll interview all, but there's a busy meeting and cut somebody out at five.
That's an interview. Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine.
If you're looking at six, we'll interview everybody.
That's fine, yes.
If it's six or more, we'll have no.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Yes, yeah, that's cool. Good.
Does that mean when you have a meeting, we're just going to eliminate one?
Just pull me this aside, it's great.
Come, all right, all right, we'll take that up when we have to. Okay. Anybody, anybody else have anything to add before we move on? Okay, let's move on to the um, the rates for our solid waste recycling compost. Ms. Murray, welcome.
Thank you, um, it's a pleasure to meet you tonight. I just wanted to say I'll be very brief and basically what we're asking tonight is permission to send the notice for the public hearing in November, November eighteenth. Which sounds like a pretty exciting council meeting, so, um.
I hope they will win approval.
Okay, thanks, we're letting you know. Basically, we covered this part. You guys know there's basically three parts to collect out of the solid waste rate. The cost of flushing provided by recology, and we have Mike Kelly here, the general manager of recology. We have um the cost of this processing and disposal, which is at the Shoreway Environmental Center, which is owned by the South Bay Wayside Management Authority or Rethink Waste. Joel and Mariana is here tonight representing Rethink Waste. And all of our city fees that recology collects on our behalf that are used to offset the solid waste program. The goal of our program is to basically make, reduce what's going into the landfill and how do we do that? Um, on the recology's cost, the prices are fixed. It's a fixed cost based on CPI. As of, um, I think we all know, last year or the year before, we renegotiated the contract, so we have a fifteen-year extension. The current um policy agreement as it reads ends twenty-twenty and the new policy be, and the new agreement begins on January first, twenty-twenty-one. Right now, the costs are fixed and they're based on the national CPI adjustments and they've been pretty fixed. Um, additionally, recology, um, beyond the scope of the franchise period, provides some additional services and we have to consider that in the cost of revenue. Um, we have the cost of processing and CPIs, as we discussed, those are the franchise fee, the solid waste program. Um, the capital improvements, basically that's uh trying to remove things going down the store drains. So the catch capture devices are what we need to do to keep any litter going down our store drains. We have a landfill closure fee and in the council's um great decision, as of twenty-eighteen, we have a rate stabilization fund to offset costs going forward. The Sydney franchise fee will stay the same, it's four percent of recology's net revenues. Um, the landfill closure fee will stay the same, it's six, it's six hundred thousand, that's to cover our maintenance and bond obligations. Um, the solid waste program is asking for two million, three hundred and fifty thousand, thousand dollars. And that basically covers our street sweeping, litter abatement, um, with all waste diversion efforts and our um store water. Um, the solid, um, and then, oh, I guess I told it all right there, huh? And then seven hundred fifty thousand is fixed for the cost of the capital improvement projects related to the municipal regional plan or areas.
How much is in the rate stabilization fund now?
Right now, well, right now, zero.
Okay.
But um we we'll uh reschedule that April with recology next year and we should have about a million five.
Okay.
Um, the fund again was created two years ago because I don't know if you guys remember. Um, in ten years ago, when we had this contract, the rate increase was nineteen point nine percent. And it's not fine to deliver that to our rate payers in order the council ever want to do that again. So we know in twenty-twenty-one, um, there's an estimation could be just just for what we have to bring recology at current cost, it'll be about a ten point eight percent rate increase. Um, we also know there's a couple outstanding measures still. Uh, currently, we have one, uh, we've limited the amount of pickups for abandoned waste and the bulkie item pickup. We're looking to expand that to include an additional route to um meet the needs of the residents of all the communities. And so there'll be costs associated with that. There are also a lot of fuel adjustments based on the cost of fuel. And now CPI will be based on the Bay Area index versus the national index, which is only fair. Um, we also have to consider beyond just what recology's going there, we have to look at capital improvements down at the plant. Um, we just recently heard that there's probably going to be about a two million dollar need for improvement for air quality control. So these keep coming up and we have to be able to adapt and adjust. Um, we have, again, regulatory compliance is constantly increasing and the needs to do that requires staff and time and equipment, and we need to do that. And um we have state mandates and there's a big one coming up effective January first of next year. Has to be thirteen eighty-three, which requires us to divert fifty percent of the organic waste that's going into a landfill by twenty-twenty-two and seventy-five percent by twenty-twenty-five. And that's huge. So and there's, it's going to require additional staff in the aspect that requires enforcement. And if we don't meet the demands, it could, we face ten thousand dollar declines, so.
Is it based on the baseline from two thousand five?
Two twenty-fourteen.
From twenty-fourteen.
So we we were so proactive and we did a good job getting organics out in there, so now we have, we're talking even a shorter, a lesser amount of time to get more out. So, and I apologize, I am obviously challenged when it comes to um product, I'm learning now and making concerted efforts with our staff. But for some reason, this chart was left out in your staff report, so I do have it here. It basically just itemizes all the costs. And we know for twenty-twenty, truthfully, the revenues coming in this year are probably going to be sufficient to cover the revenues for twenty-twenty. But we have to be forward-thinking about these costs that are coming in twenty-twenty-one and down the pike. And not put our rate payers in the position of having a a double-digit increase again. So we're asking for a four percent rate increase. We know there will be a surplus that will basically be going into the rate stabilization fund. That will be used for all one-time costs associated with weight diversion and um compliance and to just keep those rates low. But we have to have, at least, we have to have a reserve so we can meet the needs of our our residents and our merchants. So we're asking again that we can send this notice out. Uh, it would go out the week of September twenty-third, that would give us more than enough time to meet the forty-five day re- um requirement for the notification for the public hearing. And that's what we're asking for today. If it would go to the council on the eighteenth, that's a public hearing. Um, all protests would be reviewed. In the notice, it also tells every resident, merchant, and rate payer how to protest a bill or the proposed rate increase. And it would become effective January first, if approved by the council on the eighteen.
So just one quick question. So you anticipate that by Jan, December thirty-one, twenty-twenty, you'll have one point five in your stabilization fund?
Yes.
And then you're.
And then we'll be accruing upon that.
And you're going to send it right away in the next year, or?
I don't, we, just what I can honestly say, because we don't know the requirements of thirteen eighty-three, we won't know until the end of the year what they're asking.
Twenty-two. Okay.
I think it will probably be specifi- probably in the course of the next five years for sure.
Okay. I was just curious how long that pot of money will go.
I. I mean, it's not going to last forever and we're going to have to each year evaluate the new needs and the requirements because it's a real learning curve. And we don't know from the state yet what those requirements are. We know what the ultimate requirement is, but how do we get there? And they're looking not only at how much you defer down the landfill, but what programs to establish.
Okay. Uh, we're changing.
It's really changing and changing fast.
It's smooth.
And we also have to think about how we're going to do it. Currently, we charge on the size of the garbage cans, is that necessarily the right way to go? But or this year, we're having a work plan to work with consultant to reevaluate how we're doing that. And then again, that's going to involve costs. And how do we constantly, I mean, I think we always have to be forward-thinking for our rate payers, how do we mitigate these costs without putting a huge burden on them? But nineteen point nine was a huge chunk. And we don't, I don't think any of us ever want to be in the position again.
Absolutely. Okay, any other questions from council? Do we have public comment? True.
I haven't seen yourself.
Okay, sorry. You know, I I I actually thought you had another yellow sheet, I was not picking you up, but I promise.
We just.
You just have another yellow sheet in your hand. Okay, great, we'll bring you back to the council, are you okay with sending out the notice?
Yes, yeah.
Great, so you have an unanimous um from all of us to send out the notice for four percent.
Thanks, I'm glad to hear you answering these.
Thanks for all your efforts. Terrific.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
And we appreciate the planning.
But I do have one public comment.
Yes.
Um, there is a um favorite cleanup this Saturday on September twenty-first, and we got to meet and even that can be there. We're anticipating close to a thousand people coming this year, so we always love when you come, thanks.
Well, we love public horse barbecue over there.
Yeah.
And I show up for the doughnuts.
We got the doughnuts in the morning and then we got the burgers we also.
Awesome. Well, with that, and shall we adjourn?